Some building that you have together.
They were for real.
Piece of paper.
I bring the paper.
We don't want to play with you anymore.
All right, at six o'clock we'll get our meeting started. We've got a full agenda for the evening. So, uh, keep moving right along. We'll be thorough, but we'll try to get through. Uh, first of all, the pledge Bedford's gonna lead that force and an invitation by Robert. No one standing in place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Pastor, dear gracious God, we come to you in that Lord and so thankful for your favor. Up on us, Father, we thank you for the protection that you've given us today. We thank you for the ability to meet here tonight, Father. And we ask as we go into this meeting that the things discussed here, we're wish to see Mount Pleasant its rest. We give you thanks and ask for your continued protection, watch over us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, roll call please, ma'am.
Mr. Cranberry. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
And Mr. White.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we've got two sets of minutes to approve here in the study session of May the fourteenth and then the regular meeting on the nineteenth. After everybody's time to review, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept them as presented?
I'll say. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Words, presentations are a formance.
We do not have you this month.
Okay, uh, just kind of make everybody where in August, uh, if we could, we needed a nice crowd. We're gonna try to do something with the school.
Yeah.
Kate has reached out to Dr. Jackson, uh, as well as all the other principals over there. What we're gonna do is with the fact that that school and all twelve grades got recognized for STEM, actually STE.
Only one in the state.
Only one in the state. Uh, Kate and I just didn't feel like it got the recognition.
Yeah.
Quite deserved with local publication, so we're gonna do something a little bit bigger and recognize those folks.
And we'll make sure we get that out so people are aware of it.
Because it's the future of our community. We need to thank those folks.
Middle school got another recognition today.
Getting the beta.
All right, number six, completion and review of unfinished business from prior meetings. A, this is an ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty. There's a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, is set forth in Title Twelve, Chapter One, regarding an update to current codes.
Mayor and commissioners, as we talked about the study session, several of these ordinances are just getting our codes updated following the state's lead. And so we're recommending that these, this is the building codes as you're voting on right now, and they're updating them to two thousand eighteen, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Correct, and if you'll look through, and I made specific point to do it over the last two or three day reading, you'll notice that a lot of it says two thousand eighteen edition in each one.
Yeah.
It's there for it. So, that being said, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty as presented?
Have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty, again, a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance amending Title Nine of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code by adding a Chapter Seven regarding mobile food vending and by specifically exempting mobile food vending vending from Title Nine, Chapter Two, Section Two dash two oh two.
Mayor and commissioners, at the last meeting, we provided a summary of what this ordinance does. And one thing I continue to say is this does not allow more, uh, food trucks in or less. It just allows us to make sure that they're safe operations. So that's the purpose of this, and it's, again, it is a public hearing. If anybody has any comments on it?
I have a question that I was asked. When a truck comes into town, I know that like Bull's is here, but a new one comes, do they have to apply when they come in? Or is that somebody's responsibility to go see that they're in compliance?
Right now they do not have to apply, isn't that correct, Robert?
Well, they're still supposed to apply, uh, apply for application for a vendor permit unless it's on private property.
Like a daily?
But, um, they would need to come in and apply, and if not, uh, myself out in the field or somebody else that noticed that would then alert them to the fact that we do have a mobile food, uh, the ordinance that they have to apply.
Okay, I was asking because for like for an event, like if you're having something.
Yeah, and that's a special events permit too.
Okay, well, it wouldn't be like if we're having it at the restaurant. We have a snow cone of, of food then come. Do they need to have, comply, make sure they have all what's written in here?
All mobile vending is considered all mobile vending.
All right, so do they need to come see you before they come? Is that's my question?
Yeah.
If they don't, are you coming to get them?
I'm in there.
It bothered me on the last one, but that's how it was.
It's an enforcement issue, so yes, if I see them in the field, then I would do, like I, uh, see construction going on without a permit, I would stop.
Okay.
I would make conversation, I would place a stop work order there versus here I would go up.
We're just trying to avoid that.
To be compliant, they need to.
Yeah, they need to.
We're just trying to avoid that happening.
Okay, so what about private property? They got it on their own property?
There's still penalties.
True, because we want to make sure it's a safe operation, especially if they're doing, you know, deep frying or.
Nothing much concerned about permit fee because it's very minimal. It's the safety of these things.
I understand what you're saying. I understand.
It's the safety of these things that we're concerned with, but it's more or less just a safety issue.
And that'll be another thing that we need to get the word out to the community because they don't know they need to come in to do that. As you know, we all have, we have difficulty with that being that word out, but yeah, they'll need to come in to do that.
Any other discussion? Anybody in the public would like to speak on it? Please let the minutes reflect no one wanted to. That being said, I'll entertain a motion of, uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty one.
I'll make a motion to be accept ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty one as presented.
Have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty two, again, a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, is set forth in Title Seven, Chapter Two, regarding an update to current fire codes.
Mayor and commissioners, just similar to the above building code, we're updating our fire codes, and this is the second reading and it's a public hearing as well. Go follow the state's lead.
Absolutely, and again, this one's got two thousand eighteen edition.
All over it, yeah.
All through. That being said, anybody in the audience like to speak on it? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty ten fifty two for update to current fire codes.
Have a motion. We have a second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, D, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty three, again, public hearing and final reading. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant related to current gas codes.
Mayor and commissioners, this is the same thing. We're updating our gas codes to the two thousand eighteen, following the state's lead. And, and the mayor said it's a public hearing. If there's any comment?
Yeah. Anyone in the audience like to speak towards ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty three? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to be accept ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty three as presented.
Okay, have a second? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, E, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty four, again, a public hearing and a final reading. Ordinance to amend ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten thirty seven. Again, this is just updating our revenues and expenses from the operating year of July the first of two thousand nineteen through January the thirty of two thousand twenty. All right, again, these are just a few little budget amendments to get us through the end of the year.
This is a budget amendment. This is the last and final budget amendment for this current fiscal year. You had some bullet points in the last reading. The Lord talks about the lieu of taxes for the gas, which was higher than we anticipated. Um, I've got them. You've all seen them before. If there's any questions on that. You know, we have the governor's grant for downtown revitalization, a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Provide estimates for local funding. You all have seen these. So this will be the last budget amendment for this year. Last ten seconds.
Yes, and that's pretty phenomenal having a budget.
I think that's the first time we've ever done that since I've been six years.
Pretty phenomenal. Any other comments?
It is a public hearing, Mayor.
That's right. Any other questions on that? Anybody in the public here to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one wanted to. I'll entertain a motion on twenty twenty dash ten fifty four.
I make a motion that we, uh, that we accept. Approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty ten fifty four, uh, final budget amendment as presented?
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. F, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty five, public hearing and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, adopting the budget for beginning July the first of two thousand twenty and ending June the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one.
Mayor and commissioners, again, this is something we had a bullet point list on, but very quickly I'll go over, uh, what the larger changes are in this budget year. We created a new IT department. It's within the budget. We took the COSS department. We merged it within the fire department. Dispatch has been separated out from police and fire to a function to observe the cost of that operation. We have new HVAC system at the community center, four units that are possibly going to fail. We're gonna go ahead and take care of that. Sanitation truck, new sanitation truck where we don't have to have the gentleman writing on the back. Uh, it's not in the budget, but we are gonna apply for a grant and hopefully we'll get that and we can add it to the budget. Uh, we've paid off the knuckle boom truck. We added it in lieu of taxes for gas. We decreased the pavilion and air lines because that's been paid for. We are gonna use the governor's grant for downtown revitalization. Uh, local funds for downtown revitalization project. That's the state's three days that is already out there. And then we did have a health insurance increase that came in at twenty-two percent. We were able to negotiate it down to thirteen percent. We had budgeted to fifteen percent. So we are good with that, and there are no raises in the budget as of now for any employees. And we're hoping to look at that again in six months.
Any questions to Kate or Miss Loretta? So you know, this being a public hearing and final reading, anyone in the audience here to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty five for the, for the annual, annual budget tax rate for fiscal year beginning July the first, two thousand twenty, and ending June the thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. G, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty six, again, public hearing and final reading. An ordinance amending portions of the city of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to fire protection.
And mayor and commissioners, this was really a cleanup of an older ordinance that, you know, only referred to firemen. And, uh, we were trying to correct problems where it gave some authority to the fire department that they don't have. So, um, this is just recommended as a cleanup of title seven.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone in the audience here to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one did. That I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to be accept ordinance twenty twenty dash ten fifty six as presented.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, got through all those. Pretty difficult. Monthly report from mayor, I don't have anything. I'll speak at the end for just a second. I don't really have anything. Monthly financial and budget report?
You were all tense to, you know, report this weekend. Um, couple of things about that, uh, we have commenced the cutoff again. We did offer opportunity for those folks to make arrangements. Um, that being said, we did cut off the twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. Were actually cut off. And some of those have come in and either made arrangements or have paid. So we've done our best to work with, with these folks. Some of these are owed since the first two years, so they were, they were quite, quite delayed. Some of them are still off. Unfortunately. The goal is to try to help people get through these times. But at the same time, we do have to pay our bills.
Has they spent the month or?
No. Some of them probably have, but.
Some they have. The thing, you know, what I heard in the number, it concerned me a little bit, and when we stepped back and looked at it. Some of these were before the pandemic.
Most of them were. All of them were except for two.
So then it's hard to go, okay.
And we've given them opportunities for payments planned, and they've not had funded.
All they had to do on the, if they were, if they were, well, delinquent just from the, the two months. If they were, oh, on time after March, then all they had to do was sign the paper, return it to us, and, and pay over six months.
It was pretty easy to pay.
Are these people still in their residence?
Some may, some may not be. Some, some we may not know right now, honestly.
We just don't know. We've got to let time give them time.
But they don't remain in there without their utilities on for very long.
Right.
They can.
No, I'd have water. I don't know about what to see if it's gonna have water.
You gotta have water.
I gotta have water.
I don't know about the law.
Yeah, I know. Legally, they can't. They can't without water.
Yeah, I gotta have pot water. But it's only, we just turned them off of what passed week.
Yeah.
And they haven't really had enough time to.
Do we have very many people, um, apply with, with the COVID, with, with their thing to extend over the six months?
None.
I think we did.
None, not one.
All right.
Not one.
I mean, I knew we hadn't.
We put it out there. We sent letters to those. We sent letters to, we sent two letters. We sent letters to those that were, uh, current at the end of March. And, uh, like I said, give them a chance. I'll have students sign the paper, return it, and then start to make payments starting June. Uh, over six months, we paid off. We got no responses at all. And then, uh, the others that were already delinquent in March, we sent letters to them. And we gave them two weeks, um, before we would come, that was two weeks prior to cutoff. So we gave them notice and, and we sent those letters, uh, certified, so.
I know we have to do what we have to do, but I guess it breaks our hearts to know that a child or something, you know, is at home. Is there any way that, that we can notify the churches?
Well, they, they have.
We have churches. We have family to family. We've got a lot of.
There's ways, Mike.
They only allow them to do it maybe once in twice a year, so, but no, we, we go into full force.
And in your budget, you'll save their seven, I think several thirty dollars for this year. Our, our contribution to the Mount Pleasant City is making to that central.
We pay those bills.
Yeah. That's central human resources. And that's what they do.
There's all kinds of resources they can get in churches that.
But a child.
No, there's not, and, and yeah, there. And from school, when we find, when we find out somebody is there, they would step in to do that. That's why I was surprised that, yeah, nobody applied and still we had delinquent.
But you'll find that, um, that most of these, they, they don't make excuses to you there.
Yeah, show up with the key.
Unfortunately. But if you look at it, it's probably sending twice basis.
It's not.
We have four thousand customers. So twenty. But we did have some really good, um, we had some people that came in. And I know that some of the churches and some of the others were able to help some of those, and that's probably why we didn't get to some of the response. But most of them, most of them, we paid it of the whole thing, not, not just a little bit.
Again, I'm gonna keep going back to the fact that if we looked at the ones that were really, were the majority, that was the past year before it had even started. So this was not something out of the ordinary. So that's why it's good. Any questions, Loretta? That I'll entertain a motion.
Make a report. Make a motion for the monthly financial.
Have a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, monthly report from city.
Uh, mayor and commissioners, we'll let you know the state of the city report again, so we'll have it available June first, online, emailed, and hard copied here in the lobby. Finally, we're getting back to that again. Um, want to remind you too, I brought up the state session on tomorrow at two P M. There's a meeting here with Donna Morenci. Uh, we got a grant through the Main Street Organization for a marketing proposal for us. And we'd like to have you all here just to hear that. And, um, otherwise, most of my other stuff will come up in the water and gas. That's all I have.
All right. Number nine, I mean, number ten, I'm sorry. Special reports from other city departments or committees, wastewater liaison, or design sewer of that.
Yes, you all have the written copy of the update, but, uh, these, these four pictures that I sent out for anybody that wants to see is construction happening at the wastewater plant, which is the Murray County C D B G grant project for the headwinds underway. The sewer trunk line literally just was approved by USDA yesterday, so we're gonna go out for bid for that in the next week or so with the opening of the bids being July fourteenth. Fourteenth, so we'll move forward on the trunk line. Rainy Street improvements is about finished design wise. We've got an easement that we need to earn. Um, later in the, on the agenda, you're accepting a donation from Mike Floyd that is part of where we need to have an easement so that that problem is resolved there. And then the wastewater treatment plants, the biggest majority of the money spent is still in design, but very far along. I know the mayor sees our, our increased invoices.
Boy, do I. But we know where the money is to pay for it, so that's nice, Bart. And anything on gas?
I just want to let you know that Keith has set up where we have Tricer coming in and doing quite a bit of training for a number of employees, and Keith himself is going through that training to get certified in gas. So, uh, that's been every Tuesday the last couple of weeks and again next week.
Good, thank you, Ellen. We need to make sure we have people certified for that. All right. Any questions, Kate? I don't believe that requires a motion, does it?
No, my report's not very important.
I don't know about, hey, when you see pictures like that, it's really important. The city's been fighting this since nineteen ninety-two.
Yes.
All right, number eleven, new business, resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for Mount Pleasant C D C, Main Street.
And mayor and commissioners, you've already approved the budget as of this meeting. And in that budget that we are making, uh, a contribution as we always have to the C D C. We have slashed Main Street because it is going to turn into Main Street over, we hope, the next six months for sure, so that's why it's worded that way.
Any questions? Same we do every year?
Yes.
Because it'll fund a lot of good projects with this community every year. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve resolution twenty twenty dash twelve for appropriation of funds for, uh, Mount Pleasant, C D C, and Main Street.
Got a motion. We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. B, resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for Mount Pleasant Murray Museum of Local History.
Mayor and commissioners, this is very similar. The, the museum has asked us to continue to pay their gas bills. It ends up being about maybe twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars a year.
We got to fund a big thing.
Yeah.
If you may, any questions about that?
We have to do these resolutions for any non-for-profit in the budget.
Any questions? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty thirteen.
We have a motion. We have a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty dash fourteen, a resolution revising the employee compensation plan for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the year beginning July the first of two thousand twenty.
And mayor and commissioners, we typically update this every year. There is no change to any pay for any position. We simply added the IT director position, and that's in the same category as, uh, our codes position, our IT position, and parks position. That's the only change.
Any questions, Kate? Loretta? Me, none. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty days fourteen.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. D, resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen, resolution for the city of Mount Pleasant accepting a donation of land to be used for the Rainy Street Sewer Project.
This is what I mentioned before, mayor and commissioners, that, uh, one parcel of land that we need an easement on, uh, the owner is just donating the land back to us to get it off his tax rolls and didn't, wasn't aware that, uh, that he, it had been in his family. So, but we need to go ahead and accept the donation.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty days fifteen.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I should have mentioned the owner's already signed off on everything, too.
Yeah. I'm not sure he's happy to get that.
Yeah.
And it helps us.
And it helps us tremendously. Mike's a good man. E, resolution, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I think I. I'm just making sure.
We doubled it.
Hey, tell him we said thank you twice. E, resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, a resolution for engineering services for the downtown revitalization.
And mayor and commissioners, this is the, finally getting on paper, uh, permission for the engineers to do final drawings for our downtown revitalization. We're C D C consultants. Corey went through this at length. I went through this at length. This is one of those things when we get into these contracts, that there may be things we don't like, but it's standard, uh, the way they do business, and there's not much that we can argue with. Corey, you want to comment on anything, Mayor?
Yes, there were only two things I think that were, um, noteworthy. One was the liability limit, is the total fee that they are paid, which is.
And their war, yeah.
Standard practice. We've negotiated that with some of the sewer projects because the risk is higher. I don't think with this project, the risk is significantly higher than the amount they'd be paid. Uh, but that's, that is different than what y'all's practice has been. And I think the other question, Loretta, was insurance. I, and I said that to y'all and you approved it. So this was, it was actually, I liked this one.
Not too bad.
Kate, any questions? It's gonna be a nice project. It really is.
And the engineering must be done by July first of two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And they gotta get, I'm not worried about the engineering being done. I'm worried about the engineering being approved by the state. That's where it slows down, and it all, all has to be done and approved by.
Does that have to be approved by, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, no, more here.
Does that have to be approved by twenty twenty-one? The design and everything has to be approved by twenty-one. So they're gonna have to get it to the state like.
Soon as possible. Yeah, it's limited six months.
Like next month.
Kate, Kate and Loretta, we're on a conference call with them last Monday morning, uh, working through numbers more than anything about where, you know, how we were gonna come up with our matching funds. We think we've done that pretty well. We're gonna look at doing some, I talked about this in our work session. We're gonna look at doing some bond refinancing. Let me rephrase it, repricing. We're not gonna be doing any longer amortizations on it. That's what this season over the years. Not gonna do that anymore, I hope. Not going to do that anymore, I hope. All we're trying to do is get lower interest rates, and bonds are at the bottom. I mean, they are literally at the bottom right now.
Take advantage of it.
And make that a rate in half. So we're going to work on that over the next 90 days, Loretta and I will get through the budget and we'll start looking at that pretty close.
But it may be 2022 before they ever start on the project. I'm talking about...
Digging, yeah.
I hope digging late, 2021.
Okay.
Kind of very slow process. Yeah. I'll take pictures.
Well, I have a different camera button, and she may not have to be made feet on her head.
I will have to say that conference call, it was great help to us, just going through everything. And so we have a, we've got a plan in place now and not just pulling from years ago. So to make that happen. All right. Any other questions, any other conversation? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, resolution 2020-17 for our Tennessee Main Street program in a...
No, this is...
No, we're not, we're 2016, I'm sorry.
Downtown revitalization.
Downtown revitalization, go ahead, and economic development.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. F, resolution 2020-17, a resolution authorizing participation at the Tennessee Main Street program and designating a city official to represent the city.
So Mayor Commissioners, this is just the formality. I've sent a letter in support, Mayor, you signed one tonight in support, and this is what Commission passing a resolution, and Donna has been working on this application for about three months, and she's ready to submit, so she needs something from the city saying, please support the Main Street organization.
And that's all this does.
Yeah.
But we got to have, that's got to be in line, so. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution 2020-17 for authorizing participation in the Tennessee Main Street program.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. This is where I'm struggling. I have a, something in here about Murray County Fire and Rescue, Columbia Fire and Rescue that was sent to me regarding changing, does this go back in there as far as the fire department's changes?
Yeah. Well, that was on that letter. When we did that...
For changing the name firefighter to...
Yeah, that goes back to...
That's on that, that's on that place in your...
Just making sure.
We changed the language in the...
Yes, and we don't...
Firefighter, she's fireman, she's firefighter.
It will be inclined to.
So it could be politically correct.
Sorry about that.
Because I kept looking at that and it didn't have anywhere for anybody to sign. All right, that takes care of that one. G, demolition services bid approval?
As we discussed at the state session, Mayor Commissioners, this is for the building on Broadway and for a building on Glass Street. We've been working with both of these buildings for many years, and they need to come down. And in the abundance of budget, we've put quite a bit of notice in the paper, if in doubt that we're not reaching out to the heirs, and these are ready to come down. And the winner of this bid is United Way Pollers, as you saw in the bid documents at the state session. We just need in the minutes of vote to approve that bid.
That's actually, Mike owns the joint property of that, too. That's the reason he wanted to acknowledge it well, so we're going to help that whole area down here. Any questions? Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a vote.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept United Way Pollers.
Have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Write-offs, United Way Pollers.
I'll follow those at the state session. If there's any questions, do you have just one large one, several small ones, but going to go ahead and make a motion on that when we see the Loretta. Yeah.
Any other comments? Everybody had an opportunity to see those as confidential information, so I, any other questions, comments? If we can none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the write-off.
I'm expecting it.
We got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Got anybody signed, Robert Jack? Nobody signed. All right, this is where we usually open this thing up, and Dolores, anything?
Do we decide how we were going to get the info, or a way to get the information out about the brush and the...
No, we're still kind of brainstorming on that. Now, I've just been a little bit more active if I see them calling in case they haven't called. And then Steve and I talked about in the past about having them put on their doorknob, you know, we pick up your brush, but in the future, call this number, and these are the rules. And, you know, the same two sheets you saw, we can put it back to back and put with them. John Hatcher says a sticker that we could put on those cans to say these are the rules about it, that possibly too. Looks a few different.
But again, as we go around picking up trash, I mean, we can still let Steve, you know, they can let Steve...
I spoke to him today about something, yeah.
Because I mean, there's just some people just not going to call.
Right.
I'm sorry, they're just not going to call.
They're going to throw a couch on the front of South Street and just let it sit there when somebody comes to get it.
And, and driving through Columbia, and they got the exact same problem, yeah.
I wrote one, they take, I was complaining about it, I went to Kate, she said, riding by, and I rode over to Woodland in Columbia, and every house they have, they had a couch.
So we did, we're, we're working on different ideas. We haven't really resolved it yet, but I talked to Howie the next day, and I actually get where he was coming from.
And we had some dropped off at the bridge, yeah, on the...
There you go.
And Hoover Mason Road, which is the county.
Yeah, it's litter.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a dumb block.
Back on, back by, yeah, back on Hoover Mason, they're dumping it again, so.
All right, Mike, you got anything? Ms. Jacqueline? I want to say it again, there has been a tremendous amount of work done on this budget by these folks sitting right over here, and I need a tremendous amount of department heads. Everybody put a lot of work in this. I think we've got a great budget. There are some unknowns that every community is facing right now because of what's happened over the last 90, 120 days with the pandemic. We have seen, not oddly enough, but online sales taxes up considerably. People getting that stimulus and they're sitting home pointing and clicking apparently.
So, so you know that when you buy something, wherever it's delivered, you get it.
That's good, gets sold back. So that has been...
I have something I'd like to say.
Oh, I, I'm going, we're just getting around to your last.
We're not late.
But again, I just want to, I feel like we've gotten this down to a better size from where we started, certainly, and it's been, I really, I want to thank everybody for it. Again, be looking for August for some of the schools. I think we really need to promote that as much as possible for them. And that's really all I got. You're up.
I have something I'd like to say to everybody. I think you're all aware, there's been a recent open in the Parks and Rec Department. I applied for that position, and today I was formally offered that position and have accepted it. In light of the new position, I need to submit my resignation as city commissioner. And in doing so, I would like to recommend Eric Harvey have my seat as city commissioner. And if she would so be inclined to, I would like to recommend that Ms. Cranberry have my seat as only Parks Board, if that's okay. And that's really all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're in the best place.
Send a letter, accepting.
I do have something to say. It's not about this, though. It's, when we had the guy from the power company that come down and talk to us, he was talking about putting the internet thing on the light poles for a grant, and we said we didn't need it, but COVID-19 just showed up, we need it. Because, I mean, these kids are so far behind, it's a double to try to educate them when everybody, if you got charter, you cannot get online. And I mean, it, it, we need it. And that's, that's a grant that we really need to get.
It was proposed, but all we're going with right now is fixing the HBSC at the community center. But I agree with you, I'm hoping some funding becomes available to Murray County and cities because schools can't, we continue and have another issue, which I think we may.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't educate.
Well, with COVID-19, that is, that's what I'm saying, that there is a grant out there that should not be charged and topped with that, that will help provide that so that every child can have, getting into their own. Because that's how Davidson County got the laptop.
I have been in conversation with Mayor Ogles, county mayor, quite a bit about it. It's Bill Surp, and there's going to be some money come down the pipe. In his conversations with Nashville, it will enable us to look at doing that. I think it's by 2022 with the rule broadband, it's got to be available everywhere anyway.
Well, I'm just saying, I know this year, you know, with the kids and trying to teach them from paper and then trying to keep up with them online when we don't have it.
Can't do it.
It's really been a headache. And I, and I just thought, we want, so maybe the kids was not, not going to go back to school because, yeah, I didn't make what they asked them, and they're not going to be ready for that grant.
I'm with you on that.
That's going to be a big thing. I just, you know, said, I just thought, I remember when he came and talked to us, that was something that we really did need to consider.
And following up on what Commissioner Smith said, we will have some appointments done for the July meeting.
That's what I was going to say, is we will, in the July meeting, we will make the appointments. I have, I sat down with Bedford a week or so ago, and we talked about this, and I've already met with Eric myself and had lunch with him. I bet with one other person concerning it already as well, just so everybody knows that we're not waiting around on our laurels, we're going to be ahead of ourselves with this. Eric's got a lot of heart in him, he's a teacher, he's in it for all the right reasons. I want to congratulate Bedford, I think, in this city, frankly, because I think we probably just got the best Parks and Rec director in the state of Tennessee. Bedford, for those of you that don't know this, works all day at the bank, and as soon as he gets off, he goes almost straight to the convenience and works up there until I don't know what time anyway.
Herbert Thomas letting go?